We're calling this meeting to order. Make sure you shut off all the cell phones, we don't want any interruptions from that. First thing we're gonna do is stand and have a prayer and then the church will leave.
Good heavens, Father, we thank you for today, another beautiful blessed day you've given us. For us ask you to lead and guide us and give us wisdom and watch us as we go our separate ways back home. Yes, home safely, in your son's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Let me introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's one thing I want everybody to know. If you are called on to speak, we need your name first thing. We don't need your address last time they will give an address. We just need the name for the minute. No matter whether you think everybody in this crew knows you, I want your name first. Okay. First item is approval of the minutes twelve twenty-three fifteen. Looking for a motion. Jerry makes a motion, I have a second. I'll second. Got a motion and second to approve the minutes for twelve twenty-three fifteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Did you vote, Omar?
No.
Okay.
So is it three?
I wasn't here.
And one abstained?
Yes. What, I don't, I don't, did you approve, did you vote? I wasn't. Oh, yeah, all, all approved.
Because we have to have at least three to pass that flag, okay?
Okay, looking for approval of the claims. Got a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then I do have those with the SRF, go ahead and do those now. Two additional claims that need separate motions.
Oh, yeah.
So these are, excuse me, claims that are actually gonna get dispersed directly from our SRF loan. And so, and they will need a separate motion. And the first one is for Strand and Associates and the amount is three thousand one hundred and eight dollars, three thousand one hundred and eight dollars for contract administration.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the claim.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And then the second one is for Cronin Associates and it's the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And again, it'll be paid directly from SRF loan funds. It's for the water system and the regitable ban, and I emailed you a copy of it as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Is that all you got, man?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, whole business, project update, Trina Carter.
Okay, my name is Trina Carter, I'm with the Strategic Resources Association. The projects that we're working on with the Town Hall include the drinking water project, Kerry Riley on our office is working on that. So I believe Strand has an update following my project updates. Then for the park project, which is the Hope Town Square, basically the project is complete. There's some punch list items and some seating that needs to take place. But actually, the monitoring was completed with Adam Moschall of Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs on February ninth. And there were no findings, so as far as the state is concerned, the project is complete, funds have been expended as they were supposed to be. The Town Hall, Tim Scho, the Building Committee Chair, has rescheduled a January eleventh meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. So we'll meet on that evening to discuss procurement of our architectural services related to a preliminary architectural report for the United States Department of Agricultural and Land Funds through their community facilities program. The Hope Main Street, we have, we did submit the letter of intent for a downtown revitalization plan after last month's meeting. The community liaison from Oprah for this area, Andrea, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, Ditch is how I would pronounce it, has scheduled a meeting with town representatives for, again, March fifteenth in the afternoon to review the process. And that's really all I have at this time.
Quite a bit.
It's enough, but if you have any questions regarding...
What was the date on the Town Hall?
March fifteenth, that evening, I believe it was five thirty.
Anybody, any other questions? Water improvement project update.
I'm Steve Robertson with Strand Associates. The contractor has been in the area, he started February the first on Jackson Street and now we're going down Walnut Street. The plan is to continue on down Walnut till he gets to the intersection with South and he'll come back to Mill Street. There's an email group, I think all you guys are on it, Diane and several other people, trying to keep everyone up to date as far as where work's going on. I typically call the school so that Jim Tetter has access for his buses. Things seem to be going pretty smoothly. They did not turn in a pay application, so there's none, in case you're looking to spend some money tonight, you can't spend it on them. But they will have one in March yet. We did have a construction progress meeting, everything is really going pretty smooth. Unless Dave has some comments. That's about all I have. They work, they are on a four days work schedule this, and typically it's Monday through Thursday. This week it's Tuesday through Friday.
They get started pretty early in the morning.
They get here about seven in the morning.
A little earlier than that when they were front of my house.
That's because it was you.
That's probably. More like six.
Yeah.
That's alright though.
They're supposed to start at, they're supposed to work seven to five thirty. Most days we don't get done at five thirty. They were still up, cleaning up when I came down for this meeting.
I seen them up there too.
Mike, can I ask him something? Can I ask him something?
Sure.
Steve, is there any way you put me on that email list?
Sure.
For the fire department, so on.
Yeah.
Road closure.
Give it to me or whatever. One thing we are doing is they will cover the new fire hydrants with bags or plastic, so if they're covered up, they are not in service. Because there are some new fire hydrants being put in. And so that was our means to make sure you guys didn't try and use one that's... And there's no way to get water into them now, we have not tied into any of the existing mains. We have found one major leak and about three minor leaks just as we were digging. The town guys were able to slow one of them way down to major leak, so we're already making improvements.
In the existing lines?
Yes, well, we crossed an existing line on Jackson Street. We found, I don't know, Dave, what do you think, how bad was that one leaking?
Couple gallons, maybe.
And the town was able to tighten down some clamps and get that slowed way down, so we're already making some improvement. And then according to the ditch lines and some stuff, there's at least three other minor leaks that we've seen. Been able to do anything with them, sometimes you're better off not to try to fix them.
So I take it there's not water running through the new lines yet?
No.
So the advisory was because they cut a line?
Correct.
They removed, accidentally removed a water service from the existing main. That's what the advisory was for.
Well, Steve, I appreciate you keeping us, giving us the updates. It was nice to get the original one and then the follow-ups, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get the fire department on there. I think Matt, the fire department, police department, it gets them two different ways, right? So we're trying to keep everybody informed, especially emergency services, if they don't go driving up the street. Now, each evening they do get the intersections and stuff opened back up, it's just typically during the day that they have a street closed.
Any idea how long the, we're gonna be down on those hydrants?
Their plan is they will finish Walnut Street and Mill Street all the way across the highway. Then they will pressure test that line and once all the test comes back for, there's several tests you have to do for the water quality and stuff. And once that's all passes, we'll put that in operation. But it will probably be a minimum of three or four weeks before any of the new line goes in.
Did I miss, you said hydrants are down?
No, there are no hydrants down. The new hydrants are not operational.
Right.
All the old hydrants are operational.
Yeah, okay, the old hydrants are, so the other hydrants are operational.
We will leave those up and operating until the new ones are in place.
Right.
So the ones that are covered are the new ones.
Right, the ones that are covered are new ones. Once they're up and operational, anytime the hydrant is not operational, we'll cover it up.
So are we gonna wind up with the same amount of hydrants?
Actually, we are increasing the number of hydrants in a lot, some, several of them are going from a four inch line to a six inch line, which means it'll be better volume and better pressure.
Okay. Thinking for a authorization updated resolution twenty sixteen dash oh one. Have you also?
Yes, that's me again. It's pretty simple, we, they talked about it at the last meeting. And what it does is it changes the signature authorized person to Clyde from Jonathan, since he's now the president this year. It's just a bookkeeping thing, something that goes to SRF so that when anything, change orders, anything else goes through, Clyde's now, if you guys approve it, he'll be the one allowed to sign the paperwork. So I think Diane has the resolution.
Yeah. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, the resolution two zero one six dash, where's that from the glasses on zero one?
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
So there's actually three, we need three original signatures, please.
Is that all you got?
That's all I have. Thank you, welcome.
All right, Cindy Bowle, satisfying farm animals for amendment ordinance. I think it'll be the same number, I think so.
One's a resolution and one's a... Thank you, Mr. President, my name's Cindy Bowle and this is a little kind of housekeeping from last meeting. Taking the comments that were made about Mr. Sailor's chickens and also rapids being taken out of the farm animal category. And so I'm submitting that to you tonight with those changes. I believe last meeting operated this first reading, so you could pass that tonight if you so please. Do you all have copies of that?
I have one.
Okay.
Everybody should have.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance number two zero one six dash zero one.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll go ahead. I'll take it.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
How many do we need signed, Cindy?
Diane, how many do you usually like?
I just printed one, but I can print more if we need more original.
I think one original is fine for the records, we can make copies if needed.
Okay. Cindy, you're still on adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinance twenty sixteen dash oh two.
Thank you, yeah. This, and you all have got copies of this beforehand. This was sent, a sample ordinance was sent to us from American Legal Publishing. As you know, they help us with our town code and doing work to keep it updated and current. And I'm not sure that in the past we've really done an ordinance like this, but what this ordinance basically does is say, it's been updated, we're approving it, and, and that kind of gives us a baseline then for the future, you know, of knowing as of this date, these, these changes were okay by the town council, so there won't be any questions going forward. So that's really the purpose of this, and I would intend that next time they do some more work for us, we'll do a similar, a similar ordinance. The, it is written as an ordinance, so if you want to treat this as first reading, I think that's fine. And then maybe consider next, at next month's meeting.
What's your favor, Cindy?
I would be in favor. Might be considered first reading for it, then we vote aye.
All righty. Emergency Service Committee recommendation for the fire department contract. Rick Everell.
Councilman? My name's Rick Everell, I'm the chairperson of the Emergency Services Committee. We were tasked by you folks to review and make a recommendation as to the fire department contract. We met in late January, by majority vote, we recommended that the contract be approved. I know there's some concerns as to why we did that, and I'd like to address a couple of those concerns tonight, the ones that I know about. As far as the ambulance being no longer running and why they wanted more money. You gotta remember, an ambulance is a drain in itself. I mean, and I think they will admit, they probably should have dropped that ambulance many, many years ago. BLS or EMT staffed ambulances are a thing of the past, been a thing of the past for a long, long time. If you remember the show Emergency, that was from the early seventies, there was paramedics running as early as the seventies. I don't know when Bartholomew County took over a paramedic service, I think it was the late seventies, maybe early eighties. And that's just way, way above what you could ask of a volunteer service. So firefighting itself is a very expensive, very expensive endeavor. When, I was never aware of the cost, what it was actually costing me as a taxpayer, until Diane got hold of Reedie Associates. And when I saw what I was paying for, for a thousand, I was shocked. It's less than six dollars a month for me personally to protect my family and my property. That's, that's, that's cheap, that's ten times less, well, about eight times less actually than what I was paying in the state of New York. Their equipment, I think all you have to do is look at it, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not making light of it, it's, it's ancient. It's ancient, some of this stuff belongs in a museum, that's how old it is. There's a pumper over there, there's what, a sixty-two, sixty-four? That my dad, that my dad probably used when he was on the fire department fifty years ago. It's just got a new body on it, but it's still a sixty-four pumper. Their first out, what is it, eighty-five, eighty-six?
The eleven from eighty-five.
Eighty-five? Meets no standards whatsoever, present standards. Now, do they need the latest and greatest? Probably not, probably not. Mistakes have been made, there's no, there's no question, there's no question mistakes have been made in the past. But to punish the many for the sins of a few, if you want to use that analogy, which probably is a very good one, it's, it's, it's time to move, move forward, in my opinion, I think in the majority of the board's opinion. I know Reedie's gonna come forth with a, a study as to what they comparable, but you gotta remember, no other entity is gonna be exactly like hope. We have financial, industrial, residential, commercial, educational, medical facilities. And if everybody else has that that's compared to, then you can compare apples to apples. And I think that's been the problem, a lot of people are not comparing apples to apples here. There's too much being said outside at restaurants, churches, ballgames, whatever, that needs to be, needs to be settled here. I, I don't know a lot, I'm not an expert in anything, never been an expert, but I do know what it takes to run a fire department. And the Town of Hope is getting a barbie with this deal, in my opinion. In my opinion, for, I've been over thirty years in the fire service. And I know what I've seen, I know what I've seen, and there's a lot of fire departments around us that don't have what they have and how they function, I have no idea. The other issue I know is the township. As to why they pay less, that's a good question, why somebody in the township's only paying about a nickel, a thousand, and I'm paying seventeen cents a thousand, that's, that's, that's a question out of my pay grade, I, I have no ideas for that. But as to the run volume being more, you gotta remember, Miller's Merry Manor is in the township. And I would say probably on average, you guys get called out there once, once a week.
Or at least.
At least. There's fifty-two runs right there that you could take out. Why, go ahead.
That's EMT, that's EMT, that's not...
Right, but, but still, it's all included as runs, as runs, and I think the issue was runs. Why we're going to a medical facility in this county is ridiculous. Why are we sending first responders to someplace that's got people higher trained than what we are in a medical facility? It seems like this county just does, because we've always done it that way. This county's behind times in their responses, they need to, they, they just have always done it that way. Why are we sending responders to the medical center? Hell, there's a doctor there. If a doctor can't perform first response EMS, who can? You know, so that, that, my, my, my recommendation to the board, I would especially ask that you, that you definitely pass this because it's, it's a good deal. If it wasn't a good deal, and Greg, you and Jonathan know me my whole life probably, I'd, I'd tell you, it wasn't a good deal. And, but, this is a good deal, this is a good deal. You've gotta put the past in the past, and we need to move forward, because otherwise, we're gonna be without fire protection. We're gonna be without fire protection, because their stuff needs to be replaced, and it needs to be replaced now. Or probably even replaced before now, but it definitely needs to be replaced now, so, it's okay. Now, if you guys got any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
And maybe this would be more to Cindy. But I was informed during your vote that at least one person did not cast a vote. His vote was counted as a yes.
No, there's an abstention.
I was told his vote counted as a yes, it was something like ten and two is what I see.
I believe it was six and two, am I correct?
And eight and two, but I don't know about somebody not voting.
There was one individual that didn't vote.
Well, let's just say that...
Okay, so that would make it seven to...
I was told that, and that his vote was counted as a yes. And when he, when they questioned it, they said that any non-vote was a yes. And the reason I'm questioning this is because the last time they, fire department went to vote for the OMU, the first time, there was two or three firefighters that did not vote, and their votes were cast as a no. So one's gotta be right and one's gotta be wrong. And to me, whoever made up that damn rule either way, it's stupid. But if it is a rule that we need to go by, we need to have the right rule, so we do it with all our committees.
Clyde, you were saying that the people that did not vote was counted as a no, that's not true. We count the people that voted.
Ed Stone said it is in your bylaws, that if they did not vote, it was a no vote. And there was two or three of your firefighters, I remember it distinctly.
Well, I was...
I'm not arguing about it, I just want it straightened out.
I was the one that took the count, and the ones that did not vote was not counted. So we had, whatever voted yes, whatever voted no.
I just wanna know what the right way is, one way or the other.
If there's...
For all, for all our committees.
I mean, that's like Greg, well, I'm...
Could you check it Cindy, please?
I mean, I'll be happy to, but I, I'm not aware of any rule or statute that would say an abstention is counted one way or the other.
Well, that's what was said by them, by Ed Stone, said it was in your, your bylaws. And now they're saying a yes, so it's gotta be one way or the other if it's gonna be a yes.
I can't speak to what the fire department did, but I know at the committee meeting, there wasn't one abstention. To me, that's an abstention, that's, that's a vote. No, that's no vote, just period. No vote, not, not a no vote, but no vote, period. But there was by majority vote, and I think Omar, you and Jerry were there, there was a majority that voted...
I'm not disagreeing that it was a majority, I just want this issue straightened, because that's the way it be applied. It's either one way or the other, or no way.
I would agree, I would agree Cindy, I would think an abstention is just, is just no vote, period, either way.
I don't know if it's in Robert's rules order or what, but...
I mean, I'll be happy to take a look, but I just, you know, if, if the fire department has something in their bylaws that governs their corporate entity in a different way, I don't know about that. But as far as the commission goes, I just have never heard of any, any rule that would count an abstention as anything but an abstention.
That's what I was told by voting members, so I'm leaving at that, but I wanna know the answer to it. Got all you got?
Yep.
God, I do have, I did go around and counted all businesses in town. I broke it down into educational, churches, businesses. You guys would like to have a copy of it. And as far as the township goes, they do pay about ninety thousand dollars, part of it goes to us and part of it goes to Hartsburg, for the whole camp, for the whole township. That's broken down to educational, healthcare. Anybody else in the audience want one?
Randy, can I get one, please?
Oh, yes ma'am, sorry.
You can.
You definitely can, I want you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else online? Anybody else? Here you go. Anybody else? I just want to make it aware that the, the stuff that we do care if ever in town, if you look down through education, we've got five educational facilities here in town.
Hold on, before you start, hold on. During this meeting on this fire department contract, I have not taken any comments from anybody else in the audience except for you.
Well, I just want to make sure we have copies too.
I know, but you were starting on a roll.
No, I, I...
So when, whenever you want to give your screen, go ahead and do it.
Okay. Well, if you look at the paper that I passed out, I mean, we've got four healthcare facilities in town to take care of. Got five educational facilities, three daycares, six restaurants, two convenience stores, eight churches, thirty-six businesses, fourteen miscellaneous places. We've got three mobile home parks, two subdivisions, five apartment complexes, two city parks, and a major highway that runs through Hope. We do seven major activities during the year, which we take care of the medical and fire part. Relay for life, smoke on the square. Fourth of July, Hope Riot brings out a lot of people. Heritage Days brings in a lot of people. And then we've got the Halloween thing on the square, and we've got Christmas and Easter here. So... I just wanted to make that aware, you know, what we do cover. And on any one side of the square, there's volatile stuff in these buildings, that if one of those buildings go up, we're gonna have a hard time controlling it with what we got. So... That's, I just wanted to make that, you know, is that all you got? Right now.
Okay. Before there's any motion, I asked the council last month to come up with any questions, comments, whatever. So before there's a motion made, I'm going around the table so that everybody can bring out whatever their comments are, good, bad, or indifferent. So I'm gonna start with you, Barry.
It's a lucky name. That's pretty interesting there. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on in town that you realize that you don't realize, that, anyway. My opinion, and this is just my opinion, we do need to get past this. But I really, really would like to see what the Reedie group's got. But I really, really would like to see what the REED group's got, got to offer, you know, get their input on it, continue what we're doing with the MOU. Um, I know there was a conversation that there's a cap on what you guys can turn in on a monthly basis, and that is, well, that's three thousand, four thousand a month?
A little over five thousand, five hundred maybe.
And there was a concern that, you know, if you had a pump go down, or a large expansion, you couldn't turn, you couldn't, you couldn't be reimbursed for that, or, or get that. I agree with that, and I think that we need to do something with that to increase their monthly, uh, claims, but.
That, that monthly was actually just put in to help them, it doesn't, um, because normally, like right now, you wouldn't disperse until March. You wouldn't disperse anything until March.
Okay.
So, that was put in place so that, you know, we could take care of their utilities and so forth. So, you know, they only spent forty-six hundred in January, they can increase that, just so they don't, um, pass up their, you know, quarterly or what they should get.
So, o- over and above the MOU, they still get a quarterly?
No, no.
I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is to continue with the MOU, until we get something back from the REED group. My opinion, the contract needs to come from Town Hope to the fire department. Anything that we do in town, like a water project, we set, I mean, we, we ask for these things, and we seek bids or quotes, and we pick a contract and we have it done. I think it needs to be the same way on fire protection. Um, and somebody said a minute ago that REED group is, they, they provided some, oh, Rick, the numbers on, on.
Yeah, I got the numbers, those, those, that was, how much, a thousand assess valuations.
So, I mean, can anybody give, give us an update on REED group, where they're at with them?
I have not heard back from REED, Tim, did you?
Uh, Ma'am gave me the contact information, Tim Cho.
Thank you.
Uh, she gave me that contact guy, and, uh, Andrew Lannan, I believe is his name. Uh, as of Friday, he was in the, uh, delivery room with his wife. And so, I emailed back and forth with him and emphasized that it would be nice to have that information available to the council prior to this meeting. But, uh, I, the gist I got was that it was unexpected that they would be in the emergency room, or the delivery room at that time, so I don't know if anything else happened that maybe was not good or whatever, but I've not heard anything back from him other than he did forward on a, uh, recommendation, they had advised that the town might consult an attorney that specializes in these kind of contracts. They did forward on an attorney's name, I was just waiting for the rest of it to send it all through at once, but, uh, and I, I don't know whether they worked yesterday or not with the whole day, but he is on it, we just didn't have it yet. Cause I think he'd already gotten Rick, he had information, cause he had the numbers for Rick, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Rick?
No, I mean, that's, that's just, I mean, yes, we need to get past this, but we're close, and I would really like to see what the REED, I mean, they, they may come back and say, what you're asking for is not enough. I mean, they, they may come back and say, you need a hundred thousand dollars a year to operate that. They may take, they, they may evaluate your equipment, and like Rick said, you got a forty-two tanker over there that needs to be upgraded, and it may, it may, it may, the contract we got now might be a deal for the town, if they come back and say it needs to be more. But I just want to file on the board, and that's, that's my, that's my still.
We do need to watch what we budgeted for this year.
I'm sorry?
We do need to watch what we budgeted for this year.
And that's, brings up another point, and that's what the seventy.
Yes, and that's what was listed in the contract, was seventy-six thousand, seventy-two dollars or something.
That started over January one, correct? They spent.
The seventy-six thousand, seventy-two dollars was budgeted for two thousand sixteen.
Right.
So, the way Cindy worded it, if you were to choose to go with this contract, is that, um, we would exclude what's already been dispersed this year, because there was a dispersal in January of about forty-six hundred.
Right.
Karen? Well, I agree, I would like to see what the REED has to say, come back with. But also, we have a need now. Now, we expect them guys to go out there, I know my house catches on fire, I don't think they'll come out there and do what they need to do, period. And how I see it, I'm not gonna, I, I was okay with the contract that they had. The way I feel, I would give them the contract they had, see what the study says, and adjust it next year, to, to where they can get their equipment they need. To where it ain't, well, can't we do this, just because of, they, I know, they need upgrades, any, any, any profession, you've got tools, you know, you gotta keep them upgraded, you've got, you've got to. That's pretty much where I'm at, yeah, I'm really interested with what they're saying, but on the other hand, too, they need funds now, not just a few thousand dollars to get their gear to where they're as best as they can be, see what REED comes back with, then go from there, play next year on.
Even if we open up the MOU, um, monthly?
Rick?
Do we have fire protection right now? Does, does Town Hope have fire protection right now? Is Town Hope gonna have fire protection tomorrow?
Yes.
So, you know.
One, one thing I'm getting at, uh, uh, yeah, we have fire protection. And I know we do, you know, and, and they do the best what they can with what they have.
True.
So, I don't want to be another, you know, not on the head, holding them back from making, instead of taking hours upon hours, or whatever. Every fire's different, I mean, if you're getting on a firefight, then every fire's different, so it's on a little beast, it only does what they think. But I just wanna be able to get, put in their hands what they're gonna need, and then, so they can start getting it now, and then when this, this comes back from REED, then we can compare, and like you say, we may be paying them way too, way too little, or we may be paying them too much. And then, next, next year, advise, take out an advisory, and then go from there. But I, I'm like everybody else, I wanna get over, I wanna get, the past is the past, you can't let it in the past, there's no growth in the past. You know, for all adults, we're all trying to do the best we can do with what we have. I just think I wanna be able to help them as much as I can for them to be effective, and they can be, to put in a fire. I, 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 I've been there before, I've lost a house fire years ago, and I know how that feels, I lost everything. But, and I ain't why I'm booked this way, it's just to the fact that I wanna be able to give them the best that I can possibly get, and protect the town and the people of this town. And see what they have to say, and compare, that's, that's where I stand, but I'm only one, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Omar?
Well, I, I understand that, uh, uh, there's a lot, there are a lot of personal feelings that go along with this. Uh, I don't think an, an MOU is a viable solution. I think we need to give the fire department a contract. Uh, it was pointed out that when we have an MOU, there's a liability issue that could come back on the town in, in case there was a, a major loss. Because what it does, it brings back all the liability to the town, whereas if we had a contract, the contract puts all that liability in the hands of the fire department. And we're also paying them to provide the service. The REED group, is that, what is the REED group, is that, what, one person? Okay, I mean, I, I, I keep hearing about the REED group, I don't know exactly what they do. But, uh, uh, I'd like to think that, that that was, uh, uh, they'd be more timely than what they are. Uh, I would also, uh, like to request that Rick Evero read the motion that was passed in the meeting.
I don't have it, I think.
You don't have that motion in front of you?
I don't think I have that word by word, but I wasn't.
But the motion that was passed was, uh, basically in essence said that we would, uh, provide a contract to the fire department for two thousand sixteen, uh, look at what the REED, REED group had to offer, and that if we need to adjust our thinking in two thousand seventeen, we would do that. But it's important, in my opinion, that we give the fire department a contract and move forward. Let them have their money, let them do their thing, and, uh, and move on, and that's what I got.
Yes. Couple things, the MOU is not a long-term situation, that, that was designed for short-term, to get, to get to a contract. Two, you're, you're saying that there's liability issues with the MOU? How, I, I personally can't sit here and say that there's not liability issues in the contract that's being presented to us, it's the same diagonal contract that's been on there for twenty years. You know, is there, is there things in there that says that they are required to have equipment to this standard and this? I mean, there could be liability issues in the existing contract they have now.
Could I ask our attorneys to clarify that?
No.
Clarify what?
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, you're saying there's to be liability issues with, with an MOU, there could be, very well be liability issues with our contract that we presented us now.
There's gonna be liabilities issues, anything.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be less.
So, single out on MOU.
It's gonna be less if they give them a contract.
I don't agree with what you said on single out on MOU, it could go either way, that's where I think we need professional advice on entering into this contract. How many times, I know you, you have been on board very long, but it's been year after year after year that we'll, we'll go back and revisit this contract. We'll go back and revisit this contract, and we never do. We never go back and revisit the contract, we just add, add lines to it, do this or do that, and vote on it and go on. It never gets, it never gets revisited, and I'm just afraid that if we don't stay where we're at right now, seek, seek some professional advice on the contract, get their input, work with the fire department on, on monies that they need, seventy-five thousand dollars is not gonna get them the equipment and the things that they need tomorrow.
It's gonna help.
Okay, but you're not gonna get seventy-five thousand dollars tomorrow. If we approve a contract, they're gonna get how much in wins, Diane?
It'll be dispersed actually in March.
And it'll be how much roughly?
I'd have to figure that. Carrie, I don't know if I'll look on it, if you want.
But, I mean, twenty-five thousand, I don't know, but it'd be less than that, wouldn't it?
Less than that.
Be less than that, so, I mean, it sounds like to me, you're wanting your, this contract signed, and you want the money tomorrow to fix all the problems, but that's, it's not gonna happen.
Be nineteen thousand, eighteen dollars, minus the four thousand, six hundred, whatever I'm just supposed to give them.
So, we open up the MOU and, and entitle you to nineteen thousand dollars between now and the end of March. Whatever we need to do to get you that money, but.
That it?
That's it.
Y'all?
Thank you, Clyde, first of all, for point of clarification, we empowered the emergency services committee to bring a recommendation to us, so that serves as a motion. Once they bring a recommendation.
Good point, good question.
So, all we'll need would be a second, just for point of clarification. Second of all, if I could start with a question, Matt, were you responsible for getting that online?
I was.
Thank you very much, I was unavailable for the meeting, and it was, uh, it was very interesting to watch. And I do wanna thank everybody on that committee, Rick, super job. Uh, I thought that the questions were asked were to point, um, and, and just what you were talking about, Greg, you know, that was, that was one of the things that, that Tim brought up, that we can't, you know, just say, well, we'll look at it whenever, that, that we have to be specific in, in planning ahead, because the budget process, you know, we can't wait. If, if the numbers are gonna change next year, so, uh, I appreciate a- all the members on the committee asking the questions they did. Randy, I appreciate all the information that you brought to that committee, uh, I think you were well-prepared. Of course, if y'all read the newspaper, y'all already knew I was gonna be the deciding vote, so, uh, I, I think that's where we're headed. So, I'm not gonna tell you how I'm gonna vote right now, but I am gonna say thank you to all of those of you that, uh, helped to bring a recommendation to us, and, uh, I can tell you that, uh, my decision tonight is not spur of the moment. Lot of prayer, lot of thought, um, I appreciate anybody in the audience, and you know who you are, that emailed me, called me, given me your input. But at the end of the day, I have to vote for what I believe is my duty as a representative of the Town of Hope, so.
So, you stated all we need is a second?
That's correct.
I have a second.
Okay, we got a second, so, you've had your discussion, and I'll have mine. I totally agree with, uh, Greg on the REED group situation. I think it's time the town grows up and become professional, instead of guessing at numbers here and there. Uh, a couple of things come, come out here, um, back in fifteen, the township contract was broken down from the fire department and EMS, which they'd never done for the Town of Hope to start with. But it was forty-three thousand, six sixty-four for fire, EMS eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, for a total of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. So, what I have here, it's showing the two thousand sixteen Hawk Creek Township budget, there's two line items on it. One is a building payment for a fire station at thirty-six thousand, five hundred. Building expenses, additional building expenses at ten thousand, five hundred, which totaled forty-seven thousand dollars. So, with me looking at this, it looks to me like the fire department actually took a cut for the township, and is trying to stick us with a thousand dollars. So, it's four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars left to the township, to whereas seventy to eighty percent of the runs are to the township itself. So, I think that part is unfair also. The other question that just comes to my mind, years ago, we had wells here in town. So, the fire department was able to get the water from our wells. The wells run dry. The citizens of the Town of Hope pay for every single drop of water that comes into this town. So, when the fire department carries that water out, they don't pay for it, and they carry it out to the township. To me, something ain't right, that, that tends to rub me as illegal. So, so in other words, they, they dropped the price to the township, they budgeted all their money to the new fire station. So, in essence, they're gonna be running off of the, the daily, uh, runs and stuff, it's gonna be, every penny is gonna come from the Town of Hope. So, in essence, we're paying for the Town of Hope and the township, because their money is banked on that fire station that they still can't utilize. And I don't think that's fair. So, that's what I got to say about it.
Any questions, sorry to interrupt your thoughts, but, um, I guess probably for Cindy. I believe, and I could be incorrect with this, Rick, didn't you make the motion at the advisory board? I was just wondering, can he make a motion at the advisory board, and then it, him second, be the one who seconded at the seating? Maybe that's okay, but that just popped in the mind.
Um, well, there were diff, there are different groups.
Okay.
So, I think that's okay.
Okay, everybody done?
Okay, everybody done? Okay, we have a motion and second. Pass the seventy-seven thousand...
Seventy-six thousand, seventy-two dollars.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, read to us. Okay, now we're on to new business.
Can I, can I say something? We're not gonna let this set, so what's the next step with the reword?
I'd say we still need to see what they're they're saying about it, you know? So, we have something to go by the next year. I mean, we don't really have any other.
Once that information's received, it would seem appropriate to me that the emergency services committee sit down and begin to go through that.
Long as we got a plan. We need a plan.
And I, I think that, I think I can trust their members of that committee that will hold us to, to that. But I agree, Greg.
Too many times, we've just
Right, oh, I agree.
walked away, and it don't come up again until contract time, so...
I will contain the problem in a second. I get it off.
What's your name?
Tim Show. But as soon as I get, I will pull that information off as soon. I'll get on in tomorrow with an email and find out what's going on.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. New business. Animal Control. Animal Control Service Agreement. Diane.
This is just a renewal for our normal contract that we do with them. So, this contract will be, it's with the Humane Society, and it will run January first to December thirty-first. There were no changes with the contract. You've all got a copy of that or an attachment under email. So, it still stays at the forty-eight dollars per animal. But I will need a motion to enter into that agreement and the president's signature on this agreement.
I'll make that motion?
One second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Can we pass this down?
Yep.
Omar, are you voting? I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Just the last page, maybe.
Yes. Thank you.
Is that all, Diane?
That's it.
Okay, animal use agreement, canine dog, Marshal.
We did our certifications with canines last Tuesday on the nine. Daisy certified, and Duke recertified for the year of two thousand sixteen. Duke's contract isn't up until April. Daisy never was contracted. This was her certification. I just need to get contract from council to use Daisy.
Matt, where are these dogs trained at, and what kind of certification do they have?
It's a, it's a local certification regarding canines. State does not require any specific certification, as long as they're certified by a certified dog trainer.
Okay, and what does that entail?
What do you mean?
So, they're trained by a certified dog trainer to do?
To locate narcotics. Daisy is certified as a narcotics location dog.
Okay, is that all she does?
That is all Daisy does, and that is all Duke is certified for as well. Duke is going through track training. Both of them are non-aggressive. Duke is going through track training to track, like, if Todd or Lerner's out in the field, he'll be able to track at that time, but he is not certified in that yet.
Okay. Any, any other things they're gonna be doing? Are they gonna be looking for cadavers, or?
No, we're not planning on getting them certified in search and rescue, explosives, anything like that.
Okay.
I'm specifically going to keep Daisy as just narcotics.
Daisy's the one that you have, right?
Right.
And Rick has Duke?
Right.
Okay.
There is like a very minimal annual, I think it's ten dollars. You can't locate that right now, because you have to lease for an amount. Because this is the same contract as we use for Duke.
I'll make a motion that we approve the animal use agreement as presented by Marshall Town.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is myself. Job description and market rates. Last, sorry, last Tuesday of the month, the personnel committee met with New Focus HR in reference to our employee handbook. Extremely, extremely knowledgeable people. I mean, they could, they could virtually tell you what federal regulations was right off the top of their head. It's just amazing. So, we had already approved that. The rough draft will be done twenty-third, I think it is.
That's what I have on my calendar.
Twenty-third. So that we can look at it, if there's any changes, you know, we can do them, and then they will get them printed. The other thing about them is that if the federal government changes anything, and I believe it was for two years, Diane, do you remember?
I think it's indefinitely, though. Indefinitely until, you know, as long as she's in that field.
That they will, if there's changes, that they will reprint it for us at legislation law. So, we will be kept up on all federal regulations, so that we are treating everybody the way the federal government says it has to be, and take the liability factors out of it. There's no guesswork anymore, and it's done. And we can just build off of it. So, I think that was money that you as a council spent was probably the best money that I've seen in a long, long time. And I congratulate you.
So, what is it they're gonna have back to the draft on the twenty-first, the job?
Personnel policy.
Personnel policy?
Right.
For both departments?
Yes.
But is it two separate?
No.
Okay. Personnel policy versus policy, probably that's the difference.
She actually refers to it and wears a handbook, but we always refer to it as personnel policy. I don't know that it's. There you go.
So, now that I've smoothed you guys, and you feel real great about stuff, this is a little, I think we need to move to the second step. And which is doing the job descriptions, the market rates, and the payroll comparisons. What they said that they will do, first off, we have, I think today, was it nineteen sixty-seven, the last time the utility superintendent's job description was ever even looked at?
Pretty old.
I think you said nineteen sixty-seven. So...
You're still digging holes by with a shovel.
Yeah. That's why I take, that's why I did think that. So, they will take care of all job descriptions. We found out that we are doing some things that we shouldn't be doing. Nothing major that I see. It's just like the personnel files will all have to be moved here, instead of some down at the utilities, some in Matt's office. They have to be in a central location under lock and key. Settle guide. So, there, the three of them are going to get that done as soon as possible. There's other factors like salary employees versus hourly employees. There is a cutoff line to where you can be a salaried employee. You have to make four hundred or fifty dollars or more a week, and you have to have at least two people directly underneath you. Which most of, most of our head people are okay with that. But we do have, we have deputy marshals that are on a salary. They will have to be switched hourly. They will have to punch a time clock. The animal control will have to punch a time clock. So, those will have to be switched. And I'm not sure how we'll do it. There won't be any change in the money part of it, it's just it'll have to be boarded that way. So, anyway, they will go through all this. They will pick out fifteen towns in the state of Indiana, about the same size as Hope, about the same assessed value, and let us choose five towns and, as a comparison, and how much all these places pay. So that we can see, they had big words for it, but it was either were cheap, or were, you know, about right, or were paying too much. And basically, you're able to see about keeping your employees. You know where that line is. So, you'll be able, the salary ordinance next year should be agreed. So, there won't be any guesswork about how much we should pay this person, that person, or what. So, anyway, after, they would be able to start on that. They said it would probably take about two months, depending on how long it would take to get all the information from the other five towns. And basically, the total estimated cost is five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And I think it will be worth every penny of it here. So, I actually am going to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any?
Just have a question. So, this, they're, they're actually just gonna kind of refer or suggest this information to us?
Yes, but it'll be factual. I mean, it will be, it will be facts. I mean, it will be five different towns discussed.
How, how will they know that the five different towns of the fifteen that we would pick are up to standards? I mean, are they gonna give us fifteen communities that have already been through something like, how do they, how do we not know that they're already, that they might be as bad as we are if they were bad?
That's a good question. I think this company's been doing this for towns for way long time. They, they truthfully know what they're doing. I might feel comfortable with that.
What's the name of the company?
Uh, New Focus HR.
Here's the card, if you wanna see it.
I think that is a real good question, Greg. I know when they first came into our view as somebody that could assist us, one of the things was, was their experience that Clyde was just talking about, so...
I mean, there's a list of towns that they've done before, Bardersville, just on and on and on. Matter of fact, I think, actually Chris at one time said they helped them out in the county, I think. Kept them out of trouble. So, they come highly, highly.
Once, once we get that information for the salary ordinance, obviously Diane sits on that committee, but Cindy will need to be apprised of it just as quickly as, as possible, so that they can kind of begin to work together to how we need to ride it and for budgeting purposes and everything.
Yeah, I'd say we will have to, some of them will have to, we will have to divide out the time and how much they make. And what was that, thousand twenty hours a month or something?
That was just the way to calculate a salary to an hour, like she was saying for the, the few that we'll have to adjust, right?
It was an overtime thing, I believe.
Yeah.
It was twenty-eight days, a thousand twenty hours.
Oh, is that what you were talking about?
Okay, we got a motion, got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Sure, we already, you guys on the same fire department, huh? Guess that while we move on.
Okay, uh, see, the next one is building permit agreement.
Tim Show. I'd send you guys, I, I approached the county as far as the code enforcement office. As you guys know, they currently do our inspections. They're under contract with the town for twenty-five hundred dollars flat fee for the year to date. And there's some things that lack between the way we issue permits and the way they go about inspecting. It's just, it makes it a little rough. Last year, I think we brought in like six hundred and thirty-some dollars, I think, for permit sales. We spent out twenty-five hundred dollars for inspections. So, I approached the county to see if they would consider issuing the permits also. That way, it puts all the paperwork in their hands, so they know what they're inspecting. If anybody comes in with questions, they can ask the people that are actually gonna be doing the inspecting, so that they're meeting the needs that they have. So, I went and talked with the code enforcement department, and they were good with it. So, then we met with the county commissioners, which Larry's here, Rick is now, or you guys talk colonially. And they were very accepting of it. So, if you would accept this, what they would do is issue the building permits, do the inspections. That's the only part of the zoning that they would be doing. We would still be responsible for all the rest of our zoning. If a question comes up as far as variance for setbacks, that still lays with the town. So, if somebody come in with their drawing and it infringed or anything like that, they would con, or direct them to us to get their variance before they would issue a permit. Currently, according to Brenda, it says a lot of people that come in that have already been Columbus requesting the permits. I think they issued twenty-one permits last year, so it's not like a big inconvenience for us contractors picking up so much. But I think it just really cleaned things up. They have a lot of things in place that will catch if there's not activity going on permits. The county has things that trips at and says, "Hey, we need to go look." That's where the way ours goes to them doesn't do it. So, I would, I would encourage the council to accept this. It'd be a good system all the way around, I believe.
Years ago, that's the way it was, wasn't it?
I don't remember if I did that.
Charlie Darley stays, doesn't all of everything go through the county at one time?
I can't answer whether the permits were ever issued down there for the town of Hope or not.
I think that that's right, that it used to be all through the county. At some point, I think Hope wanted to do their own permits, and that was before my time. But I think you're right when Herman was, you know.
I'm thinking, yeah.
Hold on, you gotta say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Rick Gore.
What, what was the price? What was, is there savings here?
To the town, there is savings. It varies because we paid twenty-five hundred dollar flat fee for our inspections.
Right.
Last year, we issued six hundred dollars in permits. So, it depends on what kind, you know, somebody goes out there and does a hundred home subdivision, of course, we would've brought more money in. And these fees will be based on the county's fees. It will be their fees that they charge, which will be an increase over what the town currently paid, or which paid, but obviously, we have not kept up at all on our fees. But, and even at the county's fees, if we returned the county fees, we would've still lost quite a bit of money this year in the way we do it. But I wasn't really looking at it so much as a money savings, as I just think it's more efficient. The things that they require for a permit that go into their system allow them to... The things that they require for a permit that go into their system allow them to know what they're going out to inspect before they ever get there. I mean, theoretically, right now, I could, if I didn't have to have a meter pulled on my house for some reason, I could walk up here and buy a building permit, stick it up my window, build whatever I want down the back of my house. Probably wouldn't get caught in it because everybody drive by and say, well, he's got a permit. The county would really not know that I'm supposed to be calling in because our systems don't overlap enough. And so it would end up on the tax rolls until the next time they come to town. It could be infringing on my neighbors. It's just, it's just not a real efficient system the way it is. If that's what I was looking at and doing it, the savings of money was just a byproduct on it.
Well, I'd like to commend Tim for, uh, bringing this to us and, and I agree. It, to make something more efficient, uh, some of you may have seen emails. I fired a question back at him. He answered it. And if we do save a little, like you said, it's a byproduct and still, if we're more efficient, um, if, if, if we, if we save a little money, to me, it makes a lot of sense and I appreciate Tim being proactive enough to pursue that. It's something we talked about in the past. We just never got around to doing it.
And hon- honestly, that's why I did it because it has been existing thing. It wasn't like I had some revelation, revelation almost, thank you. I'd like to thank Greg for having revelations, but that wasn't one.
Yes, sir.
I worked through this system.
Your name, please.
I'm Ed Johnson. I worked at the building department for fifteen or sixteen years, did a lot of inspections. And as long as we had control over doing the inspection in Hope, knew what the permits was and so forth, it worked really well. And then two people, one on the board, one in Columbus disagreed, and everybody separated it out. And it got to be a nightmare to the point where we just, when we got ready to do inspections, we just laughed about it. Said, well, we're gonna catch one out of fifteen because we didn't know. There was no way you'd come in and, yeah, they got a permit, but a lot of times stuff got done without ever getting inspections on. And it was frustrating for us as inspectors. My say.
Question?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good even. Um, not to say anything, but I know, uh, raw corporation paid over nine hundred ninety dollars in inspections in two thousand fifteen having just sent my tax returns to the town of Hope. And also, if there's a way, is that making it more consistent? Is that the?
Who paid that?
It's raw corporation for a storage building that was built last spring.
That was a commercial.
Commercial, right. Okay, so you were getting all residential.
That went through state.
And the state, the state permits, I understand, that would still carry on just the same always did. So yeah, any state permit was not included in any way.
Okay, so we're just doing, looking at residential building permits and agreements?
Yeah, anything that still required a state would still go that way. And as a point of clarification, the one concern that the county had, and I'm sure they don't want responsible for any other zoning issues up here other than building permits and what pertains to that, so we are still responsible for the rest of it. As far as any complaints on rubbish or anything like that will still go through straight from the town Hope.
I'll make a motion that we approve the building permit agreement as presented by Mr. Shuff.
Got a motion?
Second.
Jerry?
Jerry.
Jerry.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, um, declare the nineteen ninety-four Ford truck dead. Salt sprayer, as surplus.
Yeah, uh, we replaced that truck. It's not, uh, it's in line to get plow and the crane installed. I can't sell the, the old one until it's declared surplus.
Well, it's not funny.
So once it's declared surplus, I'll advertise it and see if it.
We'll make that motion. Now that it's, Mr. Frager, it cannot be utilized?
Well, it could. It's, uh, two thousand three, so it's thirteen years old. Find the price of it and get it, we're gonna file and replace it. So, you know, I just ordered a part for it. It took about a month to get, so it's, it's in the obsolescence end of the spectrum there.
You think so? It's a package deal.
I think we're getting more out of the truck. The truck's not real attractive for anybody to bid on the plow and the salt sprayer is gonna increase the work.
I'll make that motion if we, uh, declare that surplus.
Got a motion, got a second. I'll second. Got a second.
Second, let's do one.
Jerry?
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh, any questions or comments about the submitted reports? None being, uh, is there any public comment?
I just want to thank the board for their decision tonight on the contract.
Anybody else?
Counselor.
Okay.
Obviously, it wasn't gonna come up, but, uh, I wanna, I wanna kind of make something clear, kind of go on the record. Obviously, we offed our, um, town manager last week. And, um, I, I guess, I mean, it was a shock to me. I had no idea as a council member that she had asked for a meeting back in November to clarify her salary. And I guess I'm gonna ask a question. Who received that notification on November fourth that she was asking for a meeting? All right. I, I didn't know anything about it. And then I guess, again, on January sixth, she had asked for, a request for her salary to be what it was that we agreed upon when we hired her. And she opted to take five thousand dollars last to, for operating expenses, which we all agreed upon. But was anybody on the council or anybody on the board aware of what she wrote on January sixth?
I remember reading that, but I did not understand.
So was it just addressed to you, being the council president at the time?
I, I, I think it went to everybody, Greg. However, I really, but I did not understand what was being asked at the time. And by the time that I spoke to her about it, trying, trying to make sure that it was clarified, she said to me, um, I've already written my resignation. And she sent that to Clyde and I and asked us, and out of respect to her, we both, we talked and we agreed out of respect to her that we would not share that information until she had a chance to talk to some people individually. But, um, as soon as I, as soon as I realized that there was a misunderstanding, I said, well, give me, give me a little bit of time and I'll get on this. And she said, you have my resignation.
You know, the problem I got with that is she actually worked directly under the five of us. And she gives the letter of resignation to the council president and vice. I was out of town in business in St. Louis on Friday the fifth. Whenever I happened to look at my phone and looked at the newspaper's website, it's like, what the hell? What just happened? And I, I, I mean, I was completely blindsided. And, you know, could we have been proactive? Maybe not because it sounds like nobody received this notification on the fourth, fourth of November. But by golly on the sixth, we should have reacted. Somebody should have reacted. And then to accept a resignation, just two of the five personally shouldn't have took, I, I don't think she guys should have took the resignation. It should have been presented to all of us, not just the two, you know, the council president and the vice. But I'm just clearing the record. I knew nothing about this. Huge loss in my eyes. You know, if it was over, I had spoken to Mel, but if it was over five thousand dollars, it's gonna cost us a hell of a lot more money than that for the pleasure. To start over, um, and look for applicants and, and all that. I know you wasn't involved in it, just, just you and I.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it was pretty lengthy and, so we're back to square one, so, so I gotta say that.
Well, one other thing. I, I attempted to get a hold of Mel four times and my call was never returned.
Since the fifth, since our last day?
Yes.
Actually, actually, prior to that.
Prior to that and after. So.
I, I think honestly, Greg, once, once she made a decision, she made a decision.
Oh, I'm sure. But it could have been prevented for making that decision.
But that's water under the bridge now, though, I'm afraid. Yes?
Mark Weber, East Mill Street. I apologize to town historians. I had, think, uh, been told that Mill was like the first town manager. My apologies to Delight Adams going back about twenty-five years, and she was town manager. But I've gone for a long time as town manager and to the point where we didn't know there was one, at least in our media records. As you know, can you give me any update at all on a search now, what's going to happen in the search process for a new town administrator?
Let's just say that I scheduled a executive session for the twenty-ninth to begin. About it right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else? This is closed.